There we go. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Not necessarily, yeah.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming tonight, everybody. We'll go ahead and see if there's any, there's two additions to add to the agenda. K two, at Scott St. Thomas, resignation from the fire department. And K three, the fire relief personnel update. Is there anything else anybody would like to add? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve as the agenda is.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion carries. Consent agenda, is there anything on there? If not, I would take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a second? Second. Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Alright. Visitors to the council. There is, is that where? None. Mayor's report, I have nothing tonight. Public forum, we do have four cards for tonight. Want to remind everybody, our cap is four minutes per person. And we will start with Beth Geezy, the superintendent.
Hello, mayor and council. I am Beth Geez. And I am here to simply just introduce myself and to thank you. Most or more than anything, you guys do a lot for the school. And I just wanted to make sure you had a face with the new name. And nothing more than that, but just thank you for everything that you guys do for the school, for the city, the community, all of that. It's been fun to be in over the chamber and things like that and get to know everyone in Cassin and Manorville. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, we'll have Johan Marsland.
Good evening. My name is Johan Marsland, 703 Southport Place. I come here tonight just to encourage each one of you in this difficult time when we are having violence across our nation. I was moved when I saw the assassination of Charlie Kirk this afternoon. It reminded me that our local governance is the hope of changing our nation. If we have good, strong local governance, then we will have good, strong national governance and law-abiding culture. So with the remainder of my short time, and I'll take less than two minutes, I would like to offer up a prayer. Heavenly Father, I pray that these proceedings here may inhabit righteousness and goodness and establish it here in this chamber, in this community, in our county, out to our state. We pray for a transformation of our nation and may it begin here in our hearts as we lay ourselves before you in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tracy Schmidt.
Hey, my name is Tracy Schmidt and I live in Cassin. I just, last year, I came about the same time of the year and I brought forth some concerns about the Big Iron Classic. And I just wanted to extend a thank you because those concerns were addressed. And I was incredibly impressed on how you addressed those concerns and the difference that it made this year. So I wanted to thank you. I talked a lot with Mr. Christensen about some things. And I appreciate that you heard my concerns. And my mom and dad taught me well that when you're appreciative of somebody, that you make sure that you thank them. And so I just wanted to thank the board for hearing my concerns and then making a change in our community. So, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Mr. Eric Norrie.
Hello, all. The city needs to follow the Minnesota law that relates to revoking a CUP that includes providing me a decision and reasoning between this council and the planning and zoning board. And also, I get an appeal in district court, okay? Whatever your decision is, then there's thirty days that go by, then I can file an appeal. And who knows, it could be a couple of months before you get in court. The ruling or a ruling of the district court determines if the city has cause to file a lawsuit. Okay, so the lawsuit you have now, you guys, you got the cart before the horse, okay? By filing the lawsuit on August twenty-seventh, the city is behaving as if I've already lost my appeal, which hasn't happened yet because you guys haven't voted to take my CUP away yet. Or I won't get one. I ask that you dismiss the lawsuit that's filed now and prepare for your defense of the appeal. Because that's how this process is supposed to go. Let the process of the state of Minnesota that requires regarding that, regarding revoking a CUP and the harassment lawsuit is not any part of that process at this point. Okay, so the lawsuit hindered everybody, the planning and zoning board, from actually having an open discussion. And it's going to hinder you tonight from having an open discussion. So, there's a real conflict there. What you guys say tonight will be used in district court during my appeal of your decision to revoke my conditional use permit, okay? And as you know, you're supposed to have discussion and actually address the issues, not just you think I violated the CUP, but was it reasonable? Did you commit fraud by putting a clause in there that I couldn't accomplish? The serious issues that took place. Nobody wanted to talk to people about it, and I understand, there's litigation. So I think there's a conflict there. Probably need to start over, hate to say a do-over, but you should really drop the lawsuit and then have a public hearing so that the board can actually talk about the issues. And then have a city council meeting to talk about the issues. And then let the process happen about CUPs in the state of Minnesota. And if you lose the appeal, or you win the appeal, I guess, then you file the lawsuit. That's what I'd like you to do. And I'm also wondering, I don't know for sure, maybe it's a good sign, but you've got on your agenda under committee reports for the planning commission, revocation of a CUP without any name associated with it. So let's just hope maybe that doesn't have anything to do with me. Yeah, that's about all I got, other than the fact that this whole thing about the fence is I am representing, I'm representing the people in this community to get your fence rights restored to Minnesota law versus this hokey three-foot thing with getting your neighbors' permission and all that. If I win, the community wins. Because nobody in the community supports what this board put together in an ordinance. Nobody supports it. Everybody's having trouble building. Nobody can build fence. So, I'm taking one for the town, guys. And that's about all I got going on. So please have a discussion, please all of you talk tonight. Every one of you talk about, did we commit fraud by putting a clause in there? We knew we couldn't commit because the neighbors all gave a letter. You guys know the whole story, okay? Obviously, I talked a couple of days ago at the planning and zoning board and laid out a lot of stuff, not everything I wanted to lay out, but anyways. My four minutes is probably up, so do the right thing tonight, guys. When you talk about this, make the right decision. And if you want to push this fast forward, well, just drop the lawsuit. Try to base that decision so that I can get my appeal filed in thirty days. Because we got to get into district court and get this figured out.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. That is all I had for public hearing, or I mean, public forum, sorry. Next up, public hearing, chaotic good liquor license.
Including your package, you've got items related to the relicensing for the on-sale Sunday sales, off-sale brew pub. So if there's any questions about that, I'm certainly glad to take those. Otherwise, we'll have the public hearing and if anyone has anything to say during that, they certainly can. And then you're welcome to review it again. I will note, one of the questions that came up to the EDA that the loan that was in arrears regarding to this property has been satisfied to current to date. So that impediment, as well as some of those impediments from the state of Minnesota, which we were told to off on issuing until we're met, those have been met. So I think at a staff level, we recommended, and EDA recommended approval for this, so.
Just to clarify, the loan has been paid off or the loan has been brought current?
The arrears payments were, they're brought current.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, alright. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public would like to come forward and talk about the chaotic good liquor license on off, on sale, Sunday sales, off sale brew pub. Please come to the podium.
Hey, it's Eric Norrie again. If it's for some reason, with this process, you guys decide to use a conditional use permit, I want to make sure that there's no way that you guys put something in his conditional use permit that you know beforehand, there's no way he can accomplish to try to sabotage it like you, well, like you've done before. So I'd like to do that. And also, I'd like you guys to put together a policy that, what you talk about right now, if you think if there's anything wrong with his conditional use permit, if you think the right approach is to send the police to his business with a cease and desist letter, the chief of police? Or would it make more sense to have Ian, the administrator here, zoning administrator, maybe address that and not ask the police department to be code compliance? Because that right there is a big waste of time. So for no reason do I want you to do that sort of thing. And if for some reason you have a CUP and you decide you want to revoke that CUP, don't just file litigation and don't have cease and desist letters and don't threaten contractors and don't do all that. Just go through the process, call for a public hearing, follow the Minnesota law that relates to CUPs. Because I don't want anybody else to go through the kind of bullshit you guys put me through. Thank you.
So any other public comment on liquor license for chaotic good brew? Alright, hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
Just to note that there's no CUP required for this liquor license.
It's just a standard liquor license application.
That's correct.
Any questions from council? Concerns?
This is the same, basically, liquor license we've given them before and we just have, they're reapplying now that they've, I assume, closed and reopened, is that basically what's happening?
It's a little different, right, Tim?
Yeah, so that off-sale brew pub is a little different classification, I think. Isn't that right, Scott? You guys are looking at a little different model with this one than you were last time?
Yeah, I'd be happy to clarify it.
Maybe, yeah. I guess there's always the representative, I think, from the business tonight.
Come up to the mic, state your name, if you please.
Scott Stroh, one of the owners of Chaotic Good Brewing, one of founders. Yeah, so originally, we were under a brewery model, which in the state of Minnesota, the difference between a brewery and a brew pub, is a brewery is functionally a manufacturing entity that is allowed to sell their own product. Whereas under a brew pub model, we're a tier-three restaurant with a full liquor license that is also then allowed to brew. So we'll be able to bring in salsa and guest taps and ciders and things like that that our production license previously would have prohibited us from being able to produce because federal regulations. So we'll be upping our game on food. Bob, Bob was here also, is running our food program and trying to be a little bit more accommodating to a wider range of folks who want to have a space to enjoy.
Does that help you, Paul?
Yeah.
Happy to answer any other questions.
You just stay there just in case we have any more questions, if you don't mind. It just saves you from going back.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Just excited for you to be back open. Congratulations.
Alright, well, thank you very much. With that, I would take a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Up next, committee report, planning commission, revocation of CUP. For the Norrie fence.
Oh, right, so we did have the public hearing to consider revoking Mr. Norrie's CUP to build a fence closer than three feet to his property lines at 505 Fourth Ave Northwest. The city of Cassin council did approve that about a year ago in July of 2024. As part of that conditional use process, the condition was added that the four of his neighbors that would share property lines with the fence would have to sign off on an access agreement, which was standard practice of all other CUPs that we considered fences at that time. Let's see. However, Mr. Norrie's neighbors were unwilling to sign off on an access agreement. And if that's the case, then the fence had to be built at least three feet off the property lines. Fast forward to July of this year, Mr. Norrie started to construct his fence. It was reported to City Hall that the fence was being constructed closer than three feet to the property lines, which was a violation of the CUP's conditions because he didn't have those access agreements in place. The city responded by sending three separate written notices to Mr. Norrie notifying him that he was in violation of his CUP and that he had to immediately remove the fence from anywhere that was closer to the property lines. None of the written notices were heeded, which prompted the city to consider revoking the CUP officially, which does require a public hearing and which was held on Monday night during the planning commission meeting. After the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend officially revoking Mr. Norrie's CUP. So by revoking the CUP, Mr. Norrie would fall under the current fence ordinance rules, which the city did revise last fall. However, the access agreements are still going to be required. But now the distance has been reduced from three feet down to two feet. So Mr. Norrie is still eligible to construct a fence, it just has to be at least two feet in from his property lines.
Would, if we go forth and revoke the CUP, would he have to, Mr. Norrie would have to reapply for a permit? Because he would no longer have an existing permit?
So under the new fence ordinance, you only have to apply for a permit if you're going to be putting a fence within two feet of a property line or if you're putting it in like a front yard area or if you're going to be putting your fence within an easement area. Since there's no easements that I can tell on Mr. Norrie's property, you can just build a fence two feet in from the property lines without a permit.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, make sure I was understanding that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So would one benefit from revoking this then allow him to be in accordance with our new ordinance to be two feet instead of three since he was previously, it was three feet when he did apply?
I mean, I think he could have. Yeah, he won't require a permit anymore and, you know, the two feet is going to be in accordance, it's supposed to be three feet. Yep.
One of his concerns in the three hundred and fifty-two emails and forty-eight voicemails was that his, if we revoke it, he was wondering if we could reimburse him back the fees for the fence permit. What were our thoughts on that? Any concerns or is that, is that an issue or is that something we typically do? I don't know. This has never happened before.
Charges typically pay for the public notification for the hearings and that has been held. In fact, the hearing that was held on Monday night was not charged to him.
Not charged.
So I mean, I got the answer, I would have to be no.
Okay, just making sure. This is our first time going through a revocation, so I want to cross all the Ts and dot the Is.
Yeah, I mean, our permit fees are set up to pay for the application in the newspaper as well as the mailings that we are required to do.
What about filing fees for these, for the access agreements?
There is one, that is one thing.
I may comment on that. So Mr. Norrie paid five hundred and thirty dollars back when he initially applied for the conditional use permit. Now, of that five hundred and thirty dollars, three hundred was for the actual CUP application, which does go towards, you know, the staff time, preparing everything, sending out the letters in the mail, publishing in the newspaper, all of those things. The two hundred and thirty dollars on top of that was all the recording fees. So forty-six dollars times five, so four agreements, plus the actual conditional use permit that would have been recorded at Mr. Norrie's property. That's two hundred and three dollars that we would have just passed on to the county had we received access agreements. But since that never happened, we've just been kind of holding on to them, really. That's what I would say about the situation.
So we could return that because it was money we didn't spend. But the three hundred dollars, we had to spend just to do this. And that was part of the reason why we looked at not doing CUPs anymore for the fence and working with staff.
Right.
That was a big discussion we had for some time, as you all remember.
Mm-hmm. Trying to lower the fees and the costs.
Yeah, and make it less time to get a fence, you know? Because people are limited for time. If they come late in the fall, as you know, in Midwest, you don't have much time come fall. So I don't have a problem returning the fee that we would have used forward to the county for the recording, but that would be it. The rest, we've already spent it. It's this, city had to spend it to have the...
I mean, it's certainly up to you.
But I mean, it's up to the council.
Staff can work on it. I mean, as I said, we did just publish and have another hearing.
I know.
Yeah. Had a certain amount of cost, so I could go either way on this.
I could, but...
But certainly up to the council, whatever you direct us to do.
I think you've been agreeing with the mayor that if we've got it considered a filing fee or a recording fee and we didn't actually do that service, we should return the money.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I don't have an issue with it. I'm trying to be fair. Yeah. Okay. My other question was, I know Mr. Norrie spent a lot of time reading through this process. Are, and everything he spoke to today, valid or invalid?
As far as the appeal process, if the vote is to revoke his conditional use permit, he is entitled to an appeal of that revocation. He's not entitled to an appeal of the zoning administrator's finding that he's, there's a zoning violation. Doesn't get a public hearing on that. The ordinance says the zoning administrator can initiate any action that's appropriate. However, if the council's vote is to revoke the conditional use permit, I'm sure Ian or someone from staff is going to send him a written notice of the revocation that will include information about his right to appeal and a time to do that. So he is correct, but he's assuming that the council is going to revoke and it's a little premature at this point, I would say. But he would be entitled to that if the decision, or he will be entitled to that if the decision is to revoke the conditional use permit.
If the conditional use permit and the cease and desist are two separate...
Correct.
Completely separate matters.
Correct. Two separate issues, two separate enforcement actions. Yep.
Yeah, tonight, we're just merely discussing the revocation of his CUP.
I guess I can just reiterate what I stated at the PNG, and that was Mr. Norrie, the applicant, said via written email, verbally, and at the public hearing on Monday that he thought the conditions were impossible to meet. So there's no point in us having a CUP active if the conditions are not going to be met. Because he doesn't believe they are possible, right? If they're not possible, they don't need to exist.
Okay. Is there any other comments? I would take a motion for approval of the revocation of Mr. Norrie's CUP.
I will make the motion to revoke the CUP.
Thank you, Paul. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Unanimous. Linda?
And then we'll take direction, it sounds like we'll be returning those funds. So when we do that, that notice, then we'll send the check to Ian. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next, in our committee report, we still on the planning commission, we have the Highway Fifty-seven Business Park with the preliminary and the final plat.
Oh, right, so I'll just show up on the screen a couple of exhibits here that were submitted for this request by Mr. Ron Carlson. Mr. Carlson is proposing to construct a second office building out there in front of Plaza Fifty-seven, right off of Manorville Avenue, right next to his current office building, which is the Fernbrook Family Center. You can see right there where my cursor is. And the plotting specifically is to, I guess, replat this area so that there's a clear distinction between the two different lots that are there. Right now, there is a lot line that runs right through the middle of the existing building. And so by effectively approving this plat, the land would be more evenly distributed between the two lots so that each building sits on its own lot. Now, initially, when this application was submitted, there were some concerns about stormwater and all of that. And so staff did advise that the application was incomplete at the first go-around with the planning commission. However, the planning commission did table the item. Since then, the applicant has submitted additional items for review by the city engineer that would complete the application. And let's see, the city engineer has done some review of that, reached the middle, bit of back and forth going on. But we do think that there is a path forward with all of this. And so staff did recommend conditional approval of the preliminary plat. And the condition being that those engineering items do get finalized by review of the city engineer going forward. Let's see here. And then the plat would get recorded after, after that happens. Let's see. If there's any questions from the council or from Mr. Carlson, I see that he is here in the audience. Oh, Mr. Carlson would like to address the council, it appears, if that's alright?
Yes.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. I've been excited to get going here. It's kind of been a long process, but I think we've got everything worked out. I do have a couple of questions for Brandon. On one of your items there, Brandon, you're requiring a meeting with city staff before I start. I was a little...
Yeah, just for the utilities, which is pretty normal when the underground contractor starts, they have to shut the water sewer down over there.
You won't have to.
Okay, well, that's fine then.
Because I've, you know, I've got the sewer and water stuffed in already. I got shut offs and...
Okay, most utility guys meet with them before they go, well, that's fine if there's no shutdowns. And I'm rekindled.
Do you need to be there, Brandon?
No. Just talk to have the utility guys talk to the water and sewer guys.
So like Charlie and your electrical...
Yep, new Charlie, yep.
Okay.
It's pretty sanitary usually.
And I can just line that up myself?
Yeah, if you'd like us, I'll do it, they'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I'll get the contact information to you.
Okay.
Probably got Charlie's number already.
I've got Charlie's number.
Yeah, so it'll be Charlie's, Charlie Dappin', and then probably Jared from Electric. Those'll be the three or one, so there'll be two Charlies and Jared for sure, so.
I've talked to him already because he had, he wanted to know how much load and stuff I was having there. I had Matt left answer that.
Sounds good.
Basically, what I'm trying to do right now, I think I'd have a hard time if I wanted to sell that one building because the way the property lines are. And down the road, if I ever decide, I don't want to now, but I might someday, if I sell one of the two buildings, that way they'll be on their own lot and they'll be, be a lot easier.
Any council member got any other questions? Do you got any concerns from the meeting Monday night, Paul?
No, I don't, I don't think so. We had seen this before. So we were expecting, we had a discussion in a prior PNG, well, we tabled it, right? So it was pretty cut and dry, we sent it right on, so.
And all your concerns have been taken care of, Brandon, as far as the engineers?
Yes, we submitted some stuff, we'll work through it and figure it out. I'm not worried about that.
Okay.
And I guess there is a, we did require a cross-use agreement. So if Mr. Carlson does sell one lot or another one, it's acknowledged through an agreement recorded that the parking is shared, the access is shared, the sewage services is shared. So the private, you know, use and cross-uses has been drafted and split, so we'll have to turn it into that. has been drafted and suspended while I'm returning to that. Our staff is, and that's the only other thing that we really have to work out. Just some of the verbiage on there, but...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Things we can work out.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'm going to have another question.
Okay.
Have to... Approve the... Promotion to approve that, um...
Both the preliminary and final in one, or?
I think so. Yep, is that what we're looking for, Ian?
If you want to do both at the same time, you can, I would say.
Okay. I'm fine with that if that works. I would...
Yep.
If there's no other discussion, no other concerns, I would take a motion to approve the Highway 57 business, part preliminary and final plat.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Polls? Motion carries. Thank you. Up next...
Counsel, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I'm excited to get going and then with the weather and the fall going. Brandon, would there be any problem with me getting going? CMS has approved my plans and they'll have the plans here tomorrow. Can I get started with my foundation? So I... Can I get started?
Um, let me talk with staff tomorrow and get some more time to look at this. I'll let you... I'll have Ian get involved tomorrow. Does that work?
Just, you know, with the weather and stuff, and I'd really like to get going. And if there's some issues with Massey or something, you know, we'll get them worked out for you.
Well, maybe. What's submitted with the drainage report, I gotta get dive into a little bit. Some underground attention to a small little basin that I didn't think was going to work, and I'm not sure we have it here, but we'll work it out. So let me look at it before most of our staff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to work with people, I just, we just got to make sure things work.
Yes.
Before the horse and have a foundation, a stormwater pond that we need to build or something, so.
Assuming you'll take care of that tomorrow and get back to them as soon as you can?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. Up next, on the committee report, planning commission, the Buckingham Estates 2. You got the preliminary and final plat and the tabled CUP.
Oh, right. Yeah, there is a lot for this one. So first, on the plating situation. Initially, Mr. Buckingham had applied for a minor subdivision, which the council did approve conditionally. However, it was revealed after the fact that these lots were actually vacated sometime in the late 1800s, which because that happened, it's fun working with these old properties, yes. Because that happened, it's not officially part of a recorded subdivision. And because of that, you can't use the minor subdivision process. And so when you can't do that, then you have to plat. So that's what happened with this situation. But the plat is identical to the minor subdivision that the council already approved. It's just a more official form, I would say. And so with that, let's see, we have the minor, sorry, preliminary and final plat submittals. The preliminary plat did go to planning commission for a public hearing. They did recommend approval of the preliminary plat subject to conditions. Let's see, we talked about a few different things there. Drainage was one, the state of the road, which is Third Avenue Northeast, we talked about that. Also the sewer lines. So I've been talking with Mr. Buckingham since then. He's indicated that he's planning to use just one sewer service line that would serve both of the buildings, or sorry, not both of the buildings, but both of the units for the twin homes. Let's see. And so with that, the declaration that had been prepared by Mr. Buckingham's attorney will have to be amended to reflect that change, assuming council is okay with that. Let's see. And then the other item that we talked about with the drainage, Mr. Buckingham was notified that the council had asked for a drainage plan, grading plan to review and all of that. However, haven't gotten any indication from Mr. Buckingham when that's coming. However, as staff, we do feel that having that information is important just because of the amount of impervious sets being added by this development, considering in that area. So, let's see. With all of that, three different conditions of approval being recommended here. The existing structures have to be demolished before the plat can be recorded and the CUP can be recorded. Let's see. With the plats, I'm saying that the conditional use permits, conditions have to be fully satisfied. And then with the conditional use permit specifically, that includes the declaration that I mentioned and approval of the grading and drainage plan with review by the city engineer to take place. With all of that, if there's any questions from the board?
Yeah. When you say shared responsibilities, is that going to include like a maintenance agreement for the one service line?
Right, so it would cover, you know, maintenance of the line. If there's any repairs that need to take place, they both have the responsibility. It usually covers some sort of easement in case that's required, things like that. Similar to the Etchison-Glen situation. It was another situation that came up where we have a cross-use agreement. So it's not something that hasn't happened before, I would say.
And that would get approved by staff to make sure it meets conditions?
Probably with approval of the city attorney, just to be on the safe side.
I just want to make sure that if they're sharing that, they know this and they're in agreement with this so they don't have an issue down the road, you know?
Yeah.
We want to come back. And then...
It'd be similar to what you're just previously approved with the other project because they're going to have shared services across each other's properties.
Sure.
Just as long as that can stay a private issue and they know that and they're aware that they don't have, not back before future councils, you know?
Well, that, yeah. I just want to make sure that it was that way and...
Yeah.
I know the neighbors had raised, the neighbors around this lot had raised concerns about the sufficiency of the water sewer lines and the street itself. Is that something that we should be worried about with this project since Third Ave, I think it is at that point, is really an alley?
Yeah, I mean, it's constructed to like the size of an alley, I would say.
The road itself, but based on the feedback we received from staff, we don't believe that water pressure or sewer capacity would be an issue in this area.
Okay.
Based... The only issue would be, you know, and Brandon can speak to it, splitting that water service. You know, that might be a, that might be an issue. But that is, that is really something typically we would leave up to the builder to rectify.
Sure. No, I'm more concerned about the existing neighbors in this instance. I mean, there's no concerns over any of the rather old lines in that area being overburdened or undersized?
Break down different things. We were talking, I think, a lot of different things, so.
Sure.
Water and sewer, if you're going to have a shared service, just make sure it meets building code, which CMS can take care of that. Especially if they have like a three-quarter inch service and you add two unit, next fixtures on it, I mean, out of water pressure, so check building code for that, which CMS can work through and Ian can work through. So no real issues with water and sewer. The storm so that they out there, the area of the west side of that alley, so the feature tunnel is going to drain to the south across the property to the south, and there is a drain inlet in there somewhere. It freezes up because it's super shallow, freezes in the winter, right? So I think there's probably an existing problem for getting it to drain. So the question is, is now we're adding impervious service. We have certain stormwater requirements that we have to probably follow here, hence the drainage report. So my understanding is the drainage report would show some sort of stormwater feature that has less runoff in the post-condition after the project's built than the pre-existing. And then the existing drainage problem, we're not causing any more harm downstream, right? Because we're reducing the amount of runoff from the site. Then that's probably something we have to address as a city project. Either increase the size of that storm sewer. This is also drains the First Avenue, excuse me, First Street. That's had some stormwater backups in the past. I think we've done some things, including the trunk sewer and line down Main Street, but we may have to look at getting some of that water off of First. And this just struggles to get there, right? It's super flat. Flat is flat, it's hard to drain. So I think it's more of a bigger, comprehensive plan. If the direction is to make sure the site doesn't allow any more stormwater discharge off the site, we can handle that. The existing stuff is probably an existing city project, so.
I mean, to Mel's point though, I mean, the sewer and water was kind of what she asked, but I don't think that adding one more access is going to overburden that system at that point.
One could, can view that differently.
Sure. No, I understand that, but I mean, you just indicated you didn't think it would overburden the system either, so.
For the storm sewer, I think if we're...
I'm not talking about storm sewer, I'm talking about water and water. That was Mel, Mel's question.
So nope, yeah, I thought I answered early on. So water and sewer, I think is fine, I think, so. Now, figuring out where the service is and making sure that they know what they're getting themselves into, I think is what the cross-use or maintenance agreement would be. Now, when it leaves the site, how it gets to the mains, evidently, Polver's can't find it. So I think that would be something we should be looking at to see how it gets there. But I also know project, I highly suspect project is not going to be moving forward unless they can share that water and sewer, it's going to be very difficult to get it there. So trying to bend our rules a little bit about having separate water and sewer services in order to make, you know, an infill development and, you know, a project that probably needs to happen, go. I'm fine with that as long as the end user, that's going to have a substandard sewer and water services aware of that. And they're sharing it and it's, you know, potentially undersized, so.
And just to be crystal clear, you think that this will improve the drainage, the present drainage issue on the property, or it can be ameliorated by this project?
Yeah, where all this require them to have a decrease in the stormwater runoff from the project. So probably a little rainwater garden along the south side of the property that doesn't allow the water in a hurricane rain event, any more of an increase off the site. So then they've met their obligations of our ordinance and it says, don't do what you're referring to. And that post-condition has to be less than pre and it's laid out in ordinance. We'll just follow that like we do any other subdivision, even though it's a little bit of a unique subdivision, if that's the direction of the council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other questions?
Construction of this, of this new development here going to curate that alleyway any more than it already is road-wise?
I mean, it's possible.
Yeah. More units equals more traffic, right? That's, you know, it's your... So it's not going to help. Construction is not going to help. They're going to have to haul in heavy material there, so. But it's an existing road. I think you guys as a city have an obligation to, you know, repair or vacate it, right? So it's probably a future project and it's not going to help it. But everything's not good on roads. We're subdivisions that are, you know, not good on roads, I mean, it's nature.
And I think that, you know, that was one of the biggest takeaways I had from the public was the condition of the road and, you know, looking at it myself and at staff level, I think, you know, we certainly identified this as a road that can be, you know, rebuilt as part of a future project. You know, it will require some repairs probably. I would imagine with heavy truck traffic, just building, it'll probably crack it up more. Our guys are going to have to go in like they do on a lot of other streets and do patching and crack filling and things like that, so. I just don't want to make the... Yeah, I mean, I would say, because we've kicked it back and forth. Like there's pluses. You know, infill development is a good to encourage because it is underutilized area. I mean, it's driving past it, it's, you know, I think in the metro, you're seeing a lot of that where they talk about, well, you have to have a duplex on, you know, one lot that used to be a single family. Like, we're not talking about that because I don't know that we want to do that here. But, you know, infill is something generally we like to see, but at the same time, there are some negatives, potential negatives. I mean, the biggest thing to me is making sure that whoever buys that knows their water pressure may be, you know, lower than what they're expecting. I guess at the end of the day, is that something that we dictate or is that something the buyer and the seller of a property would have to dictate? If he was building two single-family homes, we wouldn't necessarily be having some of the discussions we're having right now. It's just because it's a duplex or a twin home, to be very specific, right? They had that discussion at planning and zoning too, so. And we have, as a... So I mean, I don't know, but staff is, I mean, you know, it's an interesting project. At the same time, Ian and I have discussed it and I mean, like I said, pluses and minuses to talk about it, so.
I just want to bring up one other point, maybe to get some more clarity from Brandon. Ian, in his email that he sent us, said that Mr. Buckingham believes the drainage issues that are not on his property should not be his obligation to fix. I paraphrase there. That's not exactly the quote that he had in his email. But from what you said, the requirement that we're asking of him is that they look at it and don't make it worse, or at least have some sort of plan to mitigate the current problems. We're not asking him to fix the current problems, we're asking him to make it not worse. Is that correct?
Correct. So I would generally agree with him. Downstream prob, you know, it's downstream problem, not on his property. How can he remedy that or not easily? Our ordinance also say shall not develop if causing downstream issues on storm sewer that are in bad shape or in floods, and I don't, obviously I'm paraphrasing. And it also says in that same area, post-development, the amount of rainwater coming off your site and the two-year tenured hurricane rain event has to be less than the pre-existing. So say 10 gallons per minute come out now and he develops and it's going to be 15, we got to retain that, build stormwater features to reduce that back down to 10, per the ordinance. If we apply that to them, then he's not hurting downstream because he's not letting more water go downstream. So therefore, he's not caused that harm downstream was the standard that I'm going to apply, just like we do all of our subdivisions. And your code does say anything but single-family residential, which this is. And I get that it's an infill development, but I also want to be conscious of the downstream property owners because in theory, any increase is creating a lot of, creating, exacerbating the current problem that they have downstream of poor drainage, which our ordinances don't do that, right? Which we could apply that everywhere, right? Like we have, when it rains 100 years, our storm sewer all over town doesn't take it, right? We've picked certain projects, but we don't want to probably go down that road if property owners have said and showing pictures of stuff not draining in public works, saying, yeah, it's a pain in the butt in the winter and it does for it. So let's apply the standard that, you know, I think would hold up that we follow our ordinance. And that's totally fine and I think reasonable. The developer may not like it, it may not, you know, makes a little project down or may not go with it. Then we'll have a separate conversation if we have to at that point. And we could do some city projects and run a storm sewer pipe up there to maybe help it and get it to, get it to work better, but that's, you know, not right now. Yeah, it's a different conversation maybe for a different day.
Different year.
So all that property could say that they were harmed if we follow our ordinance and have less runoff after the project than post-development.
Yeah, so in short, we're asking him to give us... To show us that he's not going to make the problem any worse than it currently is. Okay.
Any other questions? How would you like this? Do you...
Well, I think at the end of the day, I mean, you're looking to see...
Do you need, you got a CUP, a preliminary and a final plat? That's not all, that's going to be at least two resolutions?
Well, I mean, to the table CUP, right? You know, either the council is willing to let this project proceed or it's not, right? And if you're not, then, you know, you won't approve that. And if you're not, then you're not going to approve the... I mean, it's a relatively simple preliminary plat, just taking one lot and creating two, basically. So if we don't want it to proceed, then you don't proceed with it. And if you do, then, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, the preliminary and final would be one and then the CUP would be the other. I think, Ian?
Right, yeah. So I mean, there are three resolutions before you, one for each of the requests. But, I mean, to clarify, it really all hitches on the CUP and getting those finalized because if you don't have a CUP finalized, the conditions for the plats are that, you know, you need the CUP finished first. So if you don't do that, then you don't have a plat to record. So that's kind of where we're at.
So we'd have to start with the CUP.
And are we still waiting on him providing the data for the storm water or the...
Yeah, we haven't received that yet, but...
But it's included in as a condition?
Right, a condition.
We can approve it, but it still is required before he can move forward?
Yeah.
Yeah. If you're okay with having the city engineer approve it and review it, yes, yes.
That makes sense. I'll make the motion to approve the CUP as discussed.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Polls? Motion carries. So with that, now we can look back at the preliminary and final plats being re-approved.
And I think the recommendation from planning zoning was positive on that. So, you know, as I said, it's relatively simple, you know, basically reconstituting what was previous to the vacation in the late 1800s.
So if there's no other questions, I would take a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary and...
Final?
Final plats.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? All right, thank you. That is... Next, we have the 2025-2027 EDA work plan.
Sure. So at our EDA meeting earlier this month, we did discuss the 2025 to 2027 work plan. And actually, we had discussed it at an earlier meeting. However... However, we needed to come back and tweak a few things, which is what happened just in September, so officially got the, the finalized, finalized version of the, of that work plan. Just to summarize, it has four different pillars, and those pillars are business growth and retention, workforce and housing, infrastructure and redevelopment, and communication and engagement, and so with each of those four pillars, we've talked about desired outcomes, outcome targets, and strategic initiatives. So we know what we want to look like at the end of 2027, and we have specific targets that we'll be able to measure our success towards, and the initiatives demonstrate all the different things that we hope to act on throughout the rest of that time period, so. Yeah, just some exciting things there, we're always looking forward to what we can do with the, with the EDA, so. Any questions about the work plan?
Yeah, these outcome targets, have you met any of them yet, or are they built as of today, or are they?
I would start the clock at the beginning of 2025, so with that, I mean, we certainly made some progress towards a lot of these outcome targets.
So I'm seeing like 50 acres of development-ready land? Is that, we made progress on, we have, we have lots throughout the city, I assume they're zone commercial and are vacant, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Just to be clear on some of those, I know the EDA wanted to make very clear that they're not necessarily looking for the city to purchase land or anything like that.
Right.
What they're looking is to facilitate some kind of project in that nature, and so I, I think, you know, some of the things we're doing related to, for example, water and sewer, like we applied for that grant for the Southwest project, now, we've kind of viewed that as potentially residential, and that's kind of what the emphasis on the grant is. However, you know, by bringing those utilities to the Southwest part of town, that opens up an extension that could go all the way to, you know, further south, which, you know, would be allowing that area to become industrial land or commercial land, so, I mean, I think, you know, to that one, that is something we do see some progress on, so.
So any other questions on that for Ian?
Thank you. Just to report.
Thank you. All right, up next, old business, the 2026 budget.
Sure, I've included a number of items in your packet, just related to the different pieces of the budget, I mean, you've kind of got some of them labeled there, as well as the ClearGov documents are loaded up in, PDF of it is loaded up in Dropbox, as well as, of course, the, the best option is to go online and look at that, as we discussed earlier. So, you know, big cost contributors this year are benefits, and I kind of discussed that a little bit in my, my report. But you can see the new rates, basically, healthcare rates, you know, I've included an article here related to healthcare rates throughout the state of Minnesota. You know, overall, the state is looking between, with all those providers for individual market, and we're in a small market here because we're, we're self-insured. You know, we're 12 and 17 percent, so, you know, we have increased that number in the, the budget that is in ClearGov right now, we were originally forecasting it at 10 percent, and I think I've raised that number to 20 percent to be a conservative side, because I'm expecting it to be higher than 10, last year we were at 12, around a little over 12, I think. We offered two plans, one is a high value and the other one is Blue Care or whatever they, whatever they title it, Access, one of them basically is a, a Mayo Plan and OMC and all the other ones, the other one is a little bit more restrictive, it's more like OMC and that's basically where they stick with it. So, you know, those two have different, a little bit different costs, but last year it was around 12 percent, you know, anticipating, you know, a higher number this year. We won't know that number until the first part of October, so I mean, hopefully, from 20 percent, we can cut that down to a lower number, that'll be something we would have after a preliminary levy is set, but it's always nice to be able to, to right-fit that. In addition, every year that I've been here, we've raised the deductible on our plan, and we probably will do that again this year, based on, you know, what, what that'll do to save. You know, I think, you know, we want to try and keep the rate down, but at the same time that, you know, there is a cost to it, so, anyway, just include some information on that, you can see there, Excel's rates, you know, Excel is the major transmission owner in Minnesota. They own most of this transmission that we have in our area, that's part of the contributor to some of our electricity, it's not just power and capacity, but there's also transmission costs. So their rates are going up, the state's raising its rates on water, the taxes on that. I also include a couple other items there, you've got the Minnesota Paid Leave, that's something that we have to budget for, starting in 2026, there'll be a .88 tax on employees, and currently, we're, we're looking at splitting that between the employees and the city, so the city would be paying .44, employees will be having another deduction come out. It's for the new paid leave insurance plan, so that's something we have to budget for, and the way we do that, we should take our payrolls and we multiply it times that percentage to give us an idea of what the number will be for, for the total cost that we have to contribute to the state next year. And the other items there, we've got the financial plan that we discussed at our last meeting with Mr. Rubani, you can kind of see what that looked like after he made all the tweaks that council had, had given him, as well as the projects, and then the market value trends, the League of Minnesota Cities is providing for us. So, a lot of information there, a lot of different things going on. I guess, you know, right now, we're sitting at that 8.77, so we did see a reduction from our original, and largely, that's an increase on healthcare, as I mentioned. It's a decrease on debt service, with the alteration of that bond issuance, we're able to eliminate the general levy part of that bond, and it'll be going into the, the water component, as well as putting some more cash into that to, to do some buy downs, so we eliminated that, so that, that is a bulk of it. You know, I'm certainly open to feedback, the mayor indicator was a question about how it tracks the, the valuation less new property absorption, and I'll note, last year it was almost exactly one-for-one, some years it's a little higher, some years it's a little lower, based on new property that's coming onto the market, for example, homes, we know about what that generates, we don't know exactly what, for example, some of the commercial properties that came out of the market last year, we have the EGAN facility, we don't know exactly what the increment is going to be, but we have a good idea. And what we do there is we apply the tax rates the city has, we multiply it times that taxable market value, and that gives us an idea of what that tax increment that's generated will be. We look to absorb that as part of the, of the tax levy, to reduce the impact to the individual taxpayers. The other thing we don't control is valuation, and we've talked about that at council before, you know, even if your tax rate stays the same, if your value increases, your overall taxes will increase. Since I've been here, our tax rates have dropped significantly, and that's something that I, I'm expecting, we may be able to drop the, the tax rate a little bit less. You know, I think we're at 58 percent right now, I'd like to get to 55 this year, but a lot of it depends on those commercial properties that I don't know exactly where they're going to land until we get those preliminary tax statements in November.
Do have one question for you, has the staff looked at how much extra staff time is going to take now with this new Minnesota Paid Leave? As far as, there's going to be, you have to keep track of, because at the end of the year, you're going to have to wait for the state to tell you if somebody used it, how much they paid.
They'll tell me as, as it goes along, so if somebody applies, they have to answer a question and have you notified your employer, so I would be aware that somebody is using it, and then they let me know, because there's, I have to verify what they put in as salary. And it's, it's kind of like a short-term disability that we do now, the state's going to maintain it, so I'm not going to have to do anything, all I have to do is create a formula to take that .44 percent out of everybody's check, and then every quarter, I send that to, I put that in with my unemployment report. And I do my unemployment report anyway, so.
I mean, part of it is, Linda had gotten a little time back because we had implemented the automated pay cards, you know, we talked about the time cards. So she had a little time back, now she's probably going to lose a little bit of time back, but hopefully, we have that through the, the computer system, it'll, it'll be a little bit better than doing it in paper.
It's not, it's not going to take, it's not going to take up that much time and the new automated time cards and payroll, I got it done in two hours this week.
Well, the biggest concern I have, though, is at the year end, when you're filling out their tax forms, you have to wait for the state to get you the input before you can finish it.
I should get it every quarter, because I'm going to have to match the.
That's not the kind of impression I'm getting from other employers, so I just want to make sure that we are prepared for this, that it might fall on at the last minute.
I mean, obviously, like, this year is the first year of this program, the state created it, and they've given us some guidance, which is included in your packet, but they may tweak it. I fully expect that tax will go up, I mean, I, I think it's very likely they'll find that the, the taxes that they put on there probably aren't going to pay for the utilization, and so they're going to increase that. Last year, as part of the state budget during the special session, the, the state capped it at 1.1 percent, so, you know, we don't know exactly how it's going to go, so I wish I could answer that perfectly, but.
No, I just want to make sure.
I also will say, Lynn and I have both looked at private vendors that could provide this service as well, there are a number of municipal utilities especially, that are looking at Unum and MetLife and some other vendors that are going to be offering these plans, and in some cases, they may be more cost-effective. So we're, we're continuing to look at that, so if there's a way that we can reduce that, so we offer the same program that the state's offering, however, it would not cost necessarily as much, which then the state would allow it to be qualified as it would be an equivalent plan. So, you know, we're going to continue looking at that, and I know Bill's looking at that, and if there's a way for us to find one that's less expensive, we'll certainly try and do that, but right now, it seems like the state plan is probably still going to be the, the best option for us, until I see otherwise, so I'd love to find one that was, was market.
I have another question on this.
Sure.
As we're at it. Is the city going to look at, and it does not seem now, but I mean, look at the cost of what we pay for short-term disability? And will we offset that and then apply that money towards this?
We've actually talked about that too, we'd probably drop our short-term disability plan totally.
And then we could use that money to offset the cost, so it doesn't?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, I mean, the way this is explained to me is that it's, in a lot of ways, it's going to be better than short-term disability, because with short-term disability, you have to fill the first two weeks after you go off on, till you're sick leave, you have to use sick leave or something like that, here, it should correlate like the same day. Now, it's going to be different, because the way this works is that the state makes the payment to you, it's kind of a little bit like unemployment insurance or something like that. It really, the city doesn't know, you know, it's between you and the state, in terms of how you're getting paid during your, during your leave period, so, yeah. Good questions, though, I mean, because, yeah, at the end of the day, it's a new program and they, they usually have hiccups, so.
Yeah, well, okay. All right, so, are we planning to approve a preliminary budget at the next meeting?
Preliminary levy would be required to have at the end of the month, so yes, we'd be planning on having a resolution for you at the next meeting, so.
Okay, because I thought I saw some documents in here that seemed to have disappeared, but they were dated for a date beyond today, so I might have saw those prematurely.
Resolutions in there that were moved up, Sarah's not going to be at our next meeting, but she was getting some documents ready, so that's possible, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, so as of right now, our preliminary budget looks like it's, hold on, ClearGov is, where'd it go? Right here.
Page 27.
8.7 percent.
That's right.
And this is not including any feedback that you've received from any of us on council yet?
Yeah, so I mean, there have been some discussions I have with a couple of different council members that have dealt various HR-related items, but we haven't implemented any cuts yet to, to this number. The change from our previous meeting was reduction in the debt service and the increase in the health, healthcare number to correlate more with what we're expecting.
So, yeah, and I think you mentioned that, that debt service reduction was due to a change in the, the water fund bonds?
Changing of the sourcing of the funding for that debt service issuance, that's right.
Yeah, because it's taken on water.
Moving it from a split issuance between water and general to a water-only debt service sourcing.
Okay, I think that's one of my recommendations was at the last meeting that we didn't write, so. Okay, I have not had enough time to go through and give my feedback yet through the budget, so I will work to try and get with staff at some point and do that. I think this is an okay number for a preliminary. I'd still say my target is to be 5 percent or less by the time we do final, and I know that's, might be difficult this year, but.
Well, being we have 5.5 percent increase just in benefits.
I know, I know.
You can't, you can't cut more than you have expenditures.
I mean, there's, there's other things to cut, though.
But just remember to, you know, this is.
Like I said, it's a challenge, I'll present some proposal and we can see if we can.
Just remember, next year, it's not guaranteed, but the school has rumored out on the streets, not the school themselves, but just rumor on the street, that they're looking for a referendum, and if that's the case, we definitely would have to be watching ours next year, so if this year would be the better year to be a little on the higher side, not saying 10 percent, 8 percent, but it would be better to make sure we get everything covered that we need this year, because next year, we are going to have to work to help make sure there's not a big increase if they do pass a referendum. So we got to, we got to kind of look at both aspects. And that's just a rumor, doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Very open to feedback, if you have something that you've identified, you know, tonight, or, you know, email me during the week, glad to sit down with somebody and talk through things, I know it's a, it's a, it's a big document, how many pages?
333.
Yeah, so it's a big document, it's got a lot of different things, and not all of that is, is general fund, thankfully, some of that is the, the utility funds, which we are, are going to talk about a little later, because they're not part of the levy, but.
When we, when we set it next, in two weeks, we can always go down, we just can't go up.
Yeah, right.
So when you set that number, we have another month or two to keep discussing, looking at the budget, and that number can go down, but it just can't go up.
But if I remember correctly, that number that we put in the preliminary is the one that's going to get sent out on the preliminary tax statements, right?
That's true.
So if we leave it too high, it is going to look bad, right, people will get that high number.
No matter what number we put in.
Yeah, either they're going to see it and think it's really high, or they're not going to look at all.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, and this is not, not for sure, but I'm anticipating about 5 percent taxable market valuation increase.
That would be great.
That's what I'm anticipating, I also think, I mean, to the mayor's point, like, I expect that number to taper off, because what the trend we're seeing in the housing market is that, you know, valuations, you know, we had that big spike maybe two years ago, councilor member, you know, there, Cassin is a very good housing market, however, and it's not, you know, some of these other markets you read about, Texas or Florida or whatever, we're not seeing a big decline, we're also seeing it very much flatten out. The place where I'm seeing the, the biggest jumps right now in value are the, the under 200,000, so a home that might have been bought in 2015 for 150,000, now those are going for 299. The houses that, that were selling for 425 last year, they're still selling for 425, or they might even be a little bit cheaper. So some of the newer homes, and I mean, Tony Bigelow could speak to it better than I can, but I think we're seeing that trend on the, on the, those homes is kind of flat, but where it's jumping, you know, Highway 57 is a good example, we've had a lot of homes sell on Highway 57 over the last three years, and just tracking those where they, they bought them for, you know, in 2018 for 180, and now they're going for 300,000, and it's because of that price point for the buyers is where it is, so I think that the, you know, this would be a year to capture growth, because I think that that growth that we're able to bank on is probably going to dissipate a little bit, at the same time, we also have new housing developments that are coming to the market, so that's something that'll be helpful to us, whereas last year, we only had 28 new home builds, we might have a higher number, we're guessing.
We should have those two apartment complexes going on here shortly too, right? I mean, one's built and one may outbuild.
Yeah, I mean, those are in Tiff districts, so that won't attack, that won't affect your taxable market valuation, but that is a good point, so, anyway. But yeah, so let me know if you have feedback, we're, we're very open to it, glad to have feedback from everyone tonight.
I had one question, is, is there a reason we're not getting the bid till October on insurance? I know some places are getting it sooner or later, is it because of any reason at all?
I don't, I don't think, he wanted to know why we get the bid as late as we do.
Is that the company we work with?
Schools get it way before.
Oh, we do, yeah.
On a different year calendar.
That makes sense, yeah.
I think we've, I think we've always got it in October, yeah.
Makes sense.
I would love to have it earlier, because that's one, one area where I'm hoping that we maybe can see 5 percent savings, if it comes in at 15 instead of 20, that's, that, because that's an easy cut to make, and that's one we'd love to do.
In all the years where I've worked, it's always October to earliest, they, they try to get, but the, they never get them to until then, the state's got to approve their increases first and.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. So that's all.
Fine, did you have a question, or?
No, okay. Next up is Fire Department, excuse me, Tanker.
Sure, this is something that the, the Capitol Committee's kind of looked at a little bit, some options here. I've got them included there, you've got three options really, there's a Faults Tanker, and that's coming in about 433,000, and there's two other ones. They've got a Dominator Series from OSCO, and they've got a, let me see what they call the other one here, just a second. The Commander Series, boy, they got good fire truck names here. They're 3,000 gallon tanks, that's where we want to make sure that we're getting the size that the fire department requires. And those, there are 1,000 gallons per minute pumps, that's also something the fire department has asked for, so. Basically, this is informational for you tonight, just wanted to let you know that that is working, making an order this fall on these projects. You know, based on the prices, I, you know, we'll have the fire chief make another revision. You know, based on the prices, I, you know, we'll have the Fire Chief make another review. I know preliminarily, the Fire Department had not provided as many options as I was looking for. So, I'd like to see what they say about the other options that we have here tonight, but I see no reason why we wouldn't go with an option that is cost-effective but meets the same criteria for a brand-new tanker truck.
The tanker truck we were looking to replace was one that was also helped funded by some of our smaller communities around us, correct?
No, that's not. We're on rotation of that. So, the one that was purchased back in 2022 was a 2017 model. That was the township truck. The one we're looking at eliminating, I think, is an O1.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a little bit older.
Okay. Did they apply for any grants for this?
They did. I'm not sure which grant it was, but the Fire Chief did indicate that, and that's one of the reasons I know the mayor and I had talked to him about possibly eliminating the newer truck that we purchased is because there were some maintenance issues. When it was first purchased, it was a, I don't want to call it a lemon, but it was bought out of Texas and had been in a flood. At the time, they, I think they thought they were getting a really good deal, and initially, they had spent, I don't know, $50,000 to retrofit it, put a lot of new parts into it. And based on what the Fire Chief's told me is that now that, that maintenance pattern has stayed into a regular maintenance pattern, so the maintenance pattern for both of those trucks is similar now, more just regular maintenance. So, hopefully, that, because I, I mean, my thought process was, well, if one is really a bad one, then why don't we eliminate it, even if the other one's older?
Yeah.
You know, but he said that, that the maintenance level is similar, so he would still plan on eliminating the older model, which was the one the city typically has owned.
Okay, all right.
Good question, though.
Where's, where's the money coming for the truck?
Well, that was money we put away in the stabilization fund last year as part of the, the planning for this purchase of this truck.
Okay, so we're a couple of years into setting aside funds for this already?
Well, one year for sure, but we put away, I think it was, $250,000 last year. And then the, they do, we do levy money in the capital line in the budget each year for the Fire Department, and so we would utilize those funds to help pay for it as well.
So, once this truck is purchased, is that line going to go away in future budgets, or at least decrease?
Typically, the city has had that fire truck levy in all the budgets since I've been here, and I know it's gone back quite a ways because it's utilized for a lot of their other equipment, capital equipment, for example. And the one thing that the department would like to buy is they'd like to buy some more SEBAs, and so we've typically used that for them. And it goes into their fund balance in their account.
What's going to happen with the current second through older truck?
I would believe they'd be planning on surplusing that out. Kind of similar to what we did with, what was that, two years ago, when we had that, that city from Iowa that bought the?
Yeah, I think it was about two years ago.
Yeah.
Bought the other truck.
So, what they do is they list it for sale, and then, you know, in the past, they've had farmers who've bought tanker trucks for water for their cattle or something like that. Or we did have one out of Iowa, a small, very small town, like 100, that bought the most recent fire surplus vehicle out.
Okay.
And that money would be used to help defray some of these costs as well, so, yeah.
Well, we'll wait to see if the Fire Chief comes back, when the Fire Department comes back with more input and.
Yeah.
We can all read through it and give our input too. Okay, up next, Caston Crossing update.
Sure. I think, Ian, you just wanted to let everyone know that that project is moving forward still, that the agreements are with Mr. Schrader?
Yeah, that's right. And actually, we did get a packet in the mail from Mr. Schrader, so I figure we do have signed agreements from, from him, so, yeah.
So, we're excited about that, that it's moving forward. We're hoping to have everything, I think, so that that can be finalized maybe later this month even.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Up next, wastewater treatment plant security gate, and this is actually something I brought up years ago.
Sure. Including your package, you've got a couple of items. Mr. Dappin, who's our new water supervisor, sewer supervisor, would like to have a functional gate. Currently, the gate out at the sewer plant is not, it's not closing. So, what he'd like to do is he'd like to have a new one installed and then have it so that it's mechanized, so it can be opened and closed with a basically garage door opener kind of a thing, like a. I believe that it'd be good for safety purposes. I think, you know, we've seen, and I don't run into it because I don't work up there, but he's told me before, and Charlie has before, the Public Works Director, I mean, people bike through there, they walk through there, and it's 99% of the time, it's not going to be an issue, but there's that small chance that someone's going to do something that they're destructive of their property. As you know, in the past, we've had issues at the brush site, so they installed new gates there a couple of years ago. So, he's got two different options in here. One would be to take the current gate and do some retrofitting, and that's a little bit cheaper. However, they also are going for a grant from OSHA, and that would only work if it's a new product. Plus, they did feel like a new product would probably be better from the perspective of the gate they have currently is quite a bit older. They're concerned that would have more maintenance issues going forward than something that would be new. So, up to council, I mean, I think, you know, one of these options would be, would be good to pursue, and you can read through Mr. Dappin's memo there.
Let's come out of water and sewer.
And that's true, yeah. This would be funded through the water and sewer, primarily sewer because it's the plant, but yeah, it'd be funded through those dollars.
Okay.
So, I think that I would plan on letting, you know, if the council agrees to move forward with one of these options, I think we'd like to get going on it this fall still.
Well, it's definitely a safety issue down the road too. I mean, if we can have this fair, you got less chance of, well, per se, you could call it a terrorist threat because people could get into your wastewater or your water. And if you've got a security gate, and it's going to slow them down. I mean, obviously, if somebody wants to do something, they can, but if we can slow them down and make it easier on staff to get in there, I think it's the right way to go. And talking to them out there, that gate has serious issues, and I'm afraid that put buying the cheaper option here is not going to be the cheap option in the long run. We're going to have a lot more maintenance issues down the road. For the cost difference, I see upgrading to a newer styles the way to go. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm amazed at how expensive that stuff is when it has to be maintenanceed.
It's expensive.
I guess I would lean towards the newer one too. Like, I mean, I like to save money where we can, but I know anytime we have anyone go out and work anything, you know, they're looking at $1,000 a pop for a contractor a lot of times on any of this stuff, so. I'd like to have something that would at least be five years before we'd have to start having maintenance on it. And I think, to be honest with you, if it's $5, $1,000 difference, I think it would make sense to do that.
Is there a warranty probably? Yeah, so, so then you have that too.
We've probably saved money by not fixing it over the last few years, so putting into a new one kind of offsets that. If you would have been constantly paying to fix the one that is deficient now, it would have offset those costs already.
Is there any other discussion? I would personally make the motion that we go to alternative number one, purchasing the new gate and new opening system for the wastewater treatment plant.
Is that OSHA grant going to determine that for, like, do we have to get the grant before we purchase? Or do we, if we purchase, don't get the grant, then are we at the 22 ourselves? Or we, how does that?
Well, I think what the, what the grant requires is that the council commit to doing the project. They aren't going to give you money if you aren't going to do it. However.
Never guaranteed.
You know, that's why, he actually, I said, well, I don't have a problem signing it.
Yeah.
He said, no, you've got to get the council's approval it because the mayor's got to sign the bottom of that sheet there, you know.
So, as long as we, if we're approving it.
So, I said, well, you know, Roger that, you know, we won't just put it through the budget. We'll just make sure that it comes to council for a yes or no.
Yeah, because the grant for part, for alternative number one is worth more than the, it's almost as much as the Plan Two, almost. So, I would second the alternative plan number one.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
I, I oppose.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, administrative report, which you've gone through a bunch.
I can run through and see if there's anything else here. And I do have a couple of other items in there too, but, so, yeah. LMC, they're looking at a 5% dues increase. We talked about the capital financial plan. That Compass meeting, annual meeting is coming up, so that'll be interesting to see what they have to say there. It is usually. Talked about the EDA a little bit there, some, some things there. We have a lot of vacancies. So, if you know someone who's interested in Park Board, or the EDA, or Planning and Zoning, or any of the committees really.
Also library.
Library, right. I know we have a couple of vacancies. Well, certainly, one for sure right now, and then some pending ones at the end of the year. So, we're looking for volunteers. You know, I get feedback. People say, I don't know what's going on in town. This is a great opportunity to find out what's going on in town. Levy and budget, I talked about that. Talked about kind of our 65% of the total budget is related to staffing expenses, and the vast majority of the increase this, this year is related to staffing expenses and healthcare. We're not, you know, we're not adding a lot of debt or anything like that, so it's more of a benefits year and wages year than it is a debt service year. Planning and zoning, we've kind of gone through that. Tree planting grants, I forwarded that information on to the, to the folks in the Streets Department. I know they have some concerns that there is some bureaucratic requirements with these. So, you know, fill the grant out, you know, anytime they get free money from the government, there's, there's that issue of, yeah, having to fill out paperwork for the next 20 years of your life. So, they have some concerns about that, but I'm hoping that they're interested because I think it might be an opportunity for us to, to offset some of our costs in that area. And then the solar and public buildings, I talked about that a little bit previously. I met with the consultants today who's going to be helping us to package those grants and planning getting those grants up to the, to the state here later this, end of this week. So, we'll see if that, we'll see if, what that, what the state says for that, but there'd be no cost to, to the taxpayers on that one either. So, we're, we're hoping that one moves forward. Next item down, I have there is the, first, are any questions to any of that?
I do, and this is actually back a little bit, that Minnesota State Water rate increase. You know, I see it, it goes to 1522 per service connection. What was it previously? Do you know? It doesn't?
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can certainly get information for you, Dan.
I was just kind of curious.
I think it was $9 per service connection previously, so it is a pretty good jump. I think it's about a $6 jump.
And then that goes to everybody as a fee per year?
That's what's collected, yeah. So, we collect them in the bill, and that, that's paid to the state of Minnesota then.
Okay, but it's just one $15 a year, not?
That's right.
Okay.
I just want. Yeah, not per month.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, and I was just curious what the previous rate was too, just so.
It was 926. That's just the number of six in my head previously, but.
I'd just like to find out.
Possible increase there.
Public note too, that it's another fee from the state, not from us.
Right, and we definitely have that labeled on there, on people's, folks' bills, so. I include some information here on battery storage. We've talked about this a little bit in the past, and I know we've maybe equivocated a little bit between diesel and batteries, but meeting with, you know, Jared and continue to talk about it. One of the strategic priorities that was put out this year by the council was to look at a solar project. So, we are looking at that very seriously because at the end of this year, the 30% tax credits do go away. And so, if we were to pursue a solar project or a battery project, right now, we'd be able to basically pay 70% of the cost. The other percentage would be paid for, you know, through a tax credit from the federal government. So, you know, I know that Jared and I are both looking at that pretty hard. You can see some of the pluses to the batteries. For us, not having any diesels right now, not knowing whether the state or the federal government will crack down on those. They're talking about derating diesel by about 40% in the next two years at the federal level, which is going to cause a lot of issues because the capacity, which was already tight in the summertime and the wintertime in certain areas of the country, is subsidized by those small diesel generator operators. And if you're going to derate those, you know, one of the partners we have in Compass is a city that has a much larger industrial load. It has about 40 megawatts of diesel generation, and they have a big surplus right now on the paper, on paper. You derate those by 40%, and then all of a sudden, that surplus that they had, which goes into the MISO market, determines the cost of capacity. You know, the basically, the, between the state of Minnesota and the federal government, they're trying to eliminate a lot of those diesel generators, which we can debate that until we're blue in the face, but basically, we're looking at this battery technology. Storage is where the trend is because it doesn't have the emissions, it doesn't have a lot of issues. It's rated at 92.5% for, so, you know, you buy a one-megawatt battery, and it consumes 925, you know, kilowatt hours. So, it's, it's got a much higher rating in terms of its efficiency. So, anyway, just so you know, you know, we are looking at this very seriously, and we may be bringing a proposal to council even in the next month for a project in, in the city because we see this as a way to flatten our peaks as well. So, one thing you could do with batteries is, since we're a summer peaker, you would charge those during a low-cost period of time. You know, you get to 3:30 on the third day of 90 degrees in a row in July, you release that energy back into the system. It allows us to shave our peaks on our load, to go from, you know, 12 megawatts back down to nine, which is, means that everyone would save money. In the long run, we feel like this might be a project that we, we need to do. It's not necessarily a want. It's more of a need. We have not, you know, you're aware of the substation project. Excel is doing a study, and they've been doing a study for a lot of months now. And I'm not sure when that study will come back, so I'm not sure if that'll be something we can really attack at the end of this year or not.
So, this Christmas or next Christmas?
What's that? And I'm a gen holder on Excel, and I know a lot of times, they, they definitely take their time on approvals, which is probably a very good thing to do. But something that, that, I mean, we have to kind of work with what we can, not with what I would want to do necessarily always. So, anyway, just to include that for you there, and as well, there's, there's one more item there. We've got the, just the official, this is the official statement of position. It's always got information related to our debt service, and it's very interesting because Sarah and I work with them to make sure that they have a lot of our, you know, demographic information too. But so, this is the bond that we'll be selling in October, and then closing on, the second meeting in October, I think, is when we approve, would approve that sale. So, anyway, just information for you. So, yeah, that's all I've got, and I'll leave it at that. Any questions?
Yeah, I want to go back to the solar panels. Which buildings are, are we looking at?
Well, we are, we're being pretty aggressive, and we're really looking at all the buildings, you know. So, basically, park shelter, sewer plant, public works, possibly.
This one?
City Hall would have an expansion. That's right. You know, we would probably.
Are we going to fix the ones that are there?
We would replace the old inverter and include that as part of a grant application, absolutely. The problem is the panels, not the, not the panels themselves, it's the inverters that have the biggest cost. We've actually taken a look at some of the wellhouses, you know, so the wellhouses have a tremendous load because they're constantly pumping water. So, basically, I think we've got 14? Is it 14? We've got 14 applications. So, basically, all the city buildings, we're looking at some system of some kind of size.
Okay, and then you mentioned derating diesel generators. If I understand that correctly, you're basically saying the state is going to restrict people who are running diesel generators to how much money they can make off of them?
It wouldn't be the state in this case. The state wants to get rid of all the diesel generators, period. It would be MISO. It'd be the Mid-Continental. It's the system operator for the middle part of the United States that would be derating and saying, instead of giving somebody capacity rating at 80% or 90%, depending on the age of the unit, they would say, now you've got 50%, or you have 40%. Yes, so that's, that's right. They're basically looking at eliminating that as a capacitor added for, for utilities.
Doesn't sound to be in the best interest of the people in their territory, but maybe I don't understand enough.
I think what we're seeing right now is you have a new administration coming in. There is a certain degree of bureaucratic overhaul over, and, you know, you're seeing kind of a clash between the new federal operators at the EPA and the Department of Energy level, and the folks who are in some of these other bureaucratic organizations. So, they're a little bit at cross purposes. A good example would be MISO saying, we're going to derate, you know, a city's diesel gens. At the same time, President Trump's, you know, executive orders saying, you know, these coal plants and gas plants can't close. You know, they were planned to close. He's saying, no, if you can't close for 90 days, there's 180 days because we need that capacity. So, I mean, it, it's kind of, they're at loggerheads really, and it's frustrating because we don't know how to plan. And I think a lot of utilities, I mean, you look at Rochester's a good example. I mean, I shared that information, their rate increases they're looking at. And I, I'm not a customer over there, but Jared said he got a, he's, he lives in Rochester. He said he got their newsletter, and they said they're going to send a survey out in Rochester, basically saying, do you want a 6% rate increase if we continue on the, you know, hard on the renewables, or do you want a 4% increase if we back off of that target? It was a target that was set, you know, two or three years ago, and they're basically going to go to their ratepayers and say, you want four or six? And so, I mean, it's because, you know, a lot of the utilities are in this bind between, you know, the reality is it gets cold in Minnesota, and there are days when the sun isn't that strong and the wind isn't that great. So, you have to have some kind of firm power, and at the same time, you have folks who just don't really maybe choose to understand that. And I, it's frustrating for me because I want to do what's best for our ratepayers, you know, and I think we all do, but it's hard to know what's going to be allowed, you know, if diesels will even be, we've got a couple of cities that we work with that are buying brand-new diesels right now. They're looking at that as a 30-year asset. You know, they're going to spend, you know, $2 million on a 2-megawatt generator. They don't know if the state will come in and say in five years, you can't run that anymore, even if on a new unit. On the older units, you know, we understand that, you know, the NOx testing and all that stuff, but, so it is, it's, and Excel's running into it too. You know, that's one of the reasons the Excel rates, I include that in your packet. They're going up too dramatically. So, it's, it's a, it's a tough thing that the country's kind of going through this sort of, as a whole, I think, kind of an issue. It's not just in MISO either. PJM, which is Northeast, the Southwest Parpore, they're in the same boat, so.
So, these, the idea of using the batteries to level out the peaks, when you say it saves us money, it means it saves us money because we don't have to buy as much capacity because we'll have, we'll have reduced our peak pull from the grid, right?
That's right.
So, when we're looking at these plans for these batteries, we'll be able to have a comparison, be like, yeah, we're going to spend this much in batteries upfront, but over time, because of this capacity leveling, we'll be able to do, we'll be able to save money.
Well, I can tell you right now, like, you know, we're probably spending $600,000 on capacity this year. this year, because it was a bad capacity auction, which I don't think those are going to necessarily improve. So, yeah, I mean, you know, so you're spending $600,000 this year, whereas if you could reduce those peaks, reduce your, utilize your battery storage to flatten that out, you'd be able to eliminate a lot of that capacity purchase at the market.
Okay. I look forward to seeing those calculations.
Yeah.
And how do the numbers work out?
I'd like to see how it goes, too. Anyway, okay, thank you. Good question, Paul.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Tim. Engineers report?
No formal report, just a quick update. Staff's going to be talking tomorrow about our Southwest Reconstruct. It's highly likely that that project's not going to get this done this construction season. So, the contractors asked for an extension on the timeline, so we're going to be working that out. Probably have something for you at the next council meeting. The stuff we talked about now is essentially our time that we're going to have going into next construction season, because it was October 30th completion date, to be picked up by the developer, I'm sorry, by the contractor after we kind of met or allocated hours in our budget. So, you know, it's real time to be out there watching them coordinate everything, and I don't think the city or us, that's WHK, should be paying. So, that's kind of what we talked about, if there's other directions to the council. Maybe extension with the liquidated damages to, as they went past the date. So, happy to have any conversations there, send staff on the correct directions. But, you know, the contractor's doing well, staff has enjoyed working with them, they went good with our property owners, so I don't want that to go unnoticed also, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brandon. Personnel, fire chief review.
Just some items for you, just to take a look at. You've got the information from the fire chief there. So, we haven't done a fire chief review since I've been here, and I don't know, I think, speaking with the mayor, it's all the other department heads do, and Joe understands that. And so, I appreciate the information he's provided. Just wanted to share with you kind of what the appraisal would look like, and I'll still be doing that appraisal, just like I do with the other department heads. But just wanted to share that with you, let you know that it'll be coming this fall. And I know that he looks forward to setting some targets. You know, I think, I know Joe's very open to it, because I think for him, he feels like, you know, just like anybody, if you don't have targets, you know, when you don't hit the target that someone expected but they never told you, it's hard to know if you were hitting your target. So, I think it's, and it's good for us to have those checks and balances. So, I think it'll be a good project. The fire department does a very good job covering us, and they're very involved in the community, and I certainly appreciate all the work that they do. So, I think it'll just be a healthy discussion with him, and look forward to presenting that to you in a future meeting.
We got a couple resignations of probationary firefighters. We have one for Zach Anderson, and then we will have one for Scott St. Thomas. So, we would take those as two separate...
No, you can do it as one.
Do as one, okay. So, any questions?
Do we do it, are they both probationary?
Yes.
They've been provided with exit interviews.
Okay, yeah.
I don't, I don't think the fire chief is sure that they'll necessarily send those back, but they have been provided with them, he's asking to fill them out, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you saw the one in, there for Scott St. Thomas, I mean, you saw that in your packet, K2, where he's sent the letter that he sent to the fire department, so... I would take a motion to accept their...
Make the motion to accept both resignations.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? All right. I do like to thank them for their time, and maybe if things work out, that they could come back and try again, if it works. Attorney, do we have anything?
We do have one more item under personnel there, just those fire relief...
Oh, sorry.
K3 add.
Yes, sorry.
This was something that the mayor attended the fire relief meeting, and he provided with me with the new gambling permit that the fire department, that fire relief is doing. They've created these new positions of gambling managers, as well as, based on the resignation of their treasurer, they took this opportunity to revamp their position descriptions, the jobs that they do, as well as, I believe, Mayor, and you could speak to this there, requesting that we would match a $3,000 donation to their retirement as we have in the past.
Yes. That was, they've approved it, and there, and fire relief would, association would put $3,000 in contingent if the city matched, again, this year as we have in the past. And part of the treasurer, that was the main, their current assistant treasurer, because they had a treasurer that stepped down from the position the end of August, I mean, due to time constraints. So, that was when they come up with these new, offset some of the work, so the gambling managers would take over, because some of that work, and then the treasurer would have less, because they were trying, so they wanted us to approve it so they could get somebody